Doria Hames. And Swetman's rep Charlie down here actually. Charlie Harbitt, you're here, okay. And alternate Steve Malone. Alternate Michael Stunvio. And alternate Jane Johnson is here. And we have a full board, so I don't need to see anyone or any members, so. Tonight. On our agenda, if we have approval of the minutes of December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. On a public hearings, we have a warrant article, public hearing for Article Two, Amendment One and Amendment Eight through twelve. A petition on the amendment of three zoning base all road. And under discussion, another business, a voluntary merger. Edward and Michelle Matt have requested a voluntary merger between tax map two, two, five, lot fifty four. And tax map two, two, five, lot fifty five. And any other business that may come before the board. Moving to the top. Nothing here that I see regarding regional impact, I don't think we need to be the majority tonight. Pretty much, so we'll move to. Eight minutes of December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Also written by, I think Richard. Okay, Richard, seconded by Brandon. So any further discussion on changes or modifications, anything to that? Then all the votes in favor, can you say aye, aye, opposed, opposed?
I abstain.
Abstain, okay. And moving to public hearings. These are public hearings on the warrant articles. The first one is a one article public hearing, it's Article Two, Amendment One and eight. Through twelve, what we're going to be doing tonight, the planning board has been discussing these articles for several meetings now. And refined it down to what we have now. And it was voted by consensus to have a public hearing on it on the ninth, which is what we're doing here. So this is what we're looking at, talking about voting on. And there'll be very little change unless there is grammatical errors in there, probably a little change. Because it's the public hearing, taking public input. On any amendments, any questions? And and the other one was a petition for an amendment. And that again has been before the board and the board voted to have it on this public hearing, but that was put under petition. So it means that even less can be changed on that one, made a grammatical, but that's about it. And regardless of what the board votes, it's going on for the warrant because of the petition. So that's, you can really see. So bring us to the first one. I'll open the book, uh, what the public hearing, a warrant article, public hearing, Article Two. And we'll go to the first one. Amendment number one. And that has to do with the. Amending definitions. So. I'll just read through Amendment Section thirteen by adding amending or removing the following definitions. And we are striking out corporate office, replacing it with just business offices and a definition would be buildings or our building or buildings used primarily for conducting the affairs of a business, industry or government, which may include ancillary services for office workers. And then for service establishment, establishment, we are. Been giving a definition of provide a skilled service, personal labor or expertise as opposed to providing a product or tangible commodity. And the third definition. Retail establishment, sales in small quantities and or direct to the consumer. And we're removing the definition for profession. And that is amendment number one. So anybody on the board, want to speak in favor of that amendment?
I'll just make one comment, just for the people here, what we're trying to do is block the consistent definitions and simplify the order of use. So that's what you're going to see throughout my amendments.
Yeah, pretty much that's what we're doing. We're just consolidating the definitions of of business offices, service establishments and retail establishment. Pretty much what we're doing. And any questions from the public, and the people behind you too? Any questions from the public about that? Any further discussion on the board? So then a motion would be in order.
I'll see if they're able to move to the warrant.
Okay, a motion by Michael York. To and seconded by Mark Stelera, to move it to the warrant article. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, can you say aye, aye, all of the votes? Okay. Now we're going through. The amendment number eight. Which has to do with the going the. So. We, I'll read the articles one by one as we go down through the years. And we'll do the same thing when we take a vote recommending that it be on the ballot or that it is not on the ballot. Well, that's how we'll do it, so. For the first amendment, number eight, it reads like this, amendment section seven, Article B, one, and read as follows. The Swansea Wetlands Conservation District is defined as those areas of the town consisting of wetlands and any uplands, non-wetlands within seventy-five feet of any wetlands. For purposes of section seven, wetlands means an area that is inundated or saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support. And that under normal conditions does support a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for life in the saturated soil conditions. Or as otherwise defined by R S A four eight two dash eight one two. And as it may be amended. If a site's vegetation has been cleared, the presence of hydroxic soil as determined by a professional soil scientist shall be evidence of a wetland. The Wetlands Conservation District is sometimes referred to hearing as, and we're crossing our wetlands or wetland areas, adding in the W C D. That's amendment number eight, anybody on the board wish to? Talk in favor of that?
I'm a little confused because we have Representative in the Conservation Commission who's. Not there to give us more information on all of this. And we're going to get into that information.
Yeah, we can, we can entertain the information, I see you've got it all set up there. Normally, we've done that, we've had several meetings on it and entertain all the information, but. If Jerry would like to give our presentation on what the this amendment talked about?
I would, thank you, appreciate that, thanks for having me, and everybody for coming out to hear more about this. I want to make sure we answer everybody's questions about it. And you know, here from, here from everybody who has some friends about it as well. Um, go ahead. Thank you, this one's a little small, a couple of these are a little small, I apologize because there's quite a bit of um. Wordage on there, but this is the original purpose of the current Wetland Conservation District, it's on there right now, so I'll hear some of the people. So there it has, one, two, three, four, five purposes, to prevent the development of structures and land uses on wetlands, which would contribute to the pollution of surface and groundwater. To prevent the destruction of natural wetlands, which provide flood protection, groundwater recharge, pollution abatement. The augmentation of stream flow during dry periods and valuable wildlife habitats. Letter C, to prevent unnecessary or excessive expenses to the town to provide and maintain essential services and utilities. Letter D, to encourage those uses that can be appropriately and safely located in wetland areas. And letter E, to preserve and enhance those aesthetic values associated with the wetlands of the town. Go to the next slide. So our current Wetland Conservation District does three things, it limits permitted activities in the wetlands. It provides a hundred twenty-five foot setback for septic systems. And it says that wetland areas will not be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements. So. Why is the Conservation Commission proposing to amend the Wetland Conservation District? It's because we learned that our Wetland Overlay District is not fulfilling its stated purpose of actually protecting the wetlands themselves. So a little bit of background, in two thousand and three, the planning board came to us and asked us, can we revert from that a hundred twenty-five foot? Septic setback to a seventy-five foot septic setback? And we decided, well, we need more information on that, our open space plan was quite old. Uh, we did have a natural resource inventory done, but it didn't really look in depth of the wetlands in town. So we hired Moosewood Ecological in back in two thousand and twenty-three to do two things, and one was to review our natural resource ordinances and regulations. That was to see if they were in line with our master plan and if they were doing. What we intended for them to do, if they were fulfilling their purposes. And number two was to conduct a townwide wetlands evaluation. So that we hope that would tell us more about what kinds of wetlands we had in town, what sorts of services those wetlands were providing for us and what sorts of values that they were providing for the town. Two things to note, this was paid for by our own funding and not part of the town budget. And it, the information that we've gathered is going to become part of a new open space plan that we hope to finish in the coming year. And that hasn't been updated since two thousand and four, so it's time. Next slide. So just a few things we learned on Swansea's wetlands evaluation. We have three hundred and seventy-four wetlands in Swansea, Swansea's a pretty wet place, but we're very lucky, we have an abundance of fresh clean water here in Swansea. Wetlands include wooded wetlands, marshes, swamps, peatlands, bogs, uh, beaver ponds, lake shores and rural pools. Wetlands cover about two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four acres in Swansea. They range from really small to about three hundred and seventy-one acres in size. And then for the comparative wetland evaluation, um, they chose to look at wetlands at least two acres in size, so that that. Um, meant that they looked at a hundred and seventeen wetlands covering about twenty-five hundred acres, and the average size was twenty-two acres. So the wetland evaluation itself used the method for inventorying and evaluating freshwater wetlands in New Hampshire. And using this method, they did G I S work, field work, biologists identified various well, excuse me, functions of wetlands and assigned value to each of those functions. So if you go to the Conservation Commission page on the town website. Um, you can see the summary of this wetland evaluation and you can look at all the different maps they came up with that show us. What's the top ten percent? Of wetlands for flood control, for example, in Swansea, the top ten percent most important. Wetlands for flood control, what's the top ten percent most important wetlands for wildlife habitat? So they looked at, and I'll show you in the next slide, they looked at a variety of functions and values that way, so these are the functions and values they looked at, they looked at ecological integrity. Is that wetland basically intact, does it have all its? All its values intact? Fish and wildlife habitat, flood storage, groundwater recharge, sediment and nutrient trapping and retention. Shoreline anchoring. Recreation and education potential, scenic quality and also no worthiness, so do we have any particular wetlands that are sort of like statewide? They've been, perhaps. So um, that was the wetlands evaluation, then we had them review our land use planning documents. So they had a number of recommendations in the wetland, excuse me, in the land use planning documents, and a lot of them. Uh, centered around wetlands. Uh, that was a place where we were a little bit weak, so protecting our aquifer, our wetlands and our flood plains. This is kind of an issue for us because we're very rich in. In fresh water, we want to make sure we're protecting those things. So. Two of their particular recommendations were things that we felt like. We could try to act on pretty quickly, and one was to reconsider allowed uses within the wetlands district, which is what these amendments do. And the other is to consider establishing an upland buffer ordinance, which is also part of these amendments. Next slide. So the bottom line that Moosewood told us um, was that the functions of many of our wetlands in town have been compromised because we are lacking. A naturally vegetated buffer along a lot of these wetlands, not all, not most of them, but there's certainly some that have been compromised. Because our Wetland Overlay District allows the alteration and the destruction of that buffer and has no development setback except for septic systems. It's not really fulfilling its stated purposes of protecting our wetlands. So why is an upland buffer important? Well, a healthy intact wetland requires some protection around it, and this is just a piece of land in town where, or more, several pieces of land in town where. There really is, is no buffer. Between the wetland and what's going on upland. So wetland buffers do a number of things, they can catch and filter runoff, taking out trash, taking out sediment, phosphorus and other pollutants before it gets to the brook or the marsh or whatever wetland we're talking about. It can absorb rainfall and snowmelt and slow floodwaters, and if you remember the flood that we had a year and a half ago. I watched our wetland expand hugely upstream from our house to absorb those floodwaters. Buffers can protect critical habitat and corridors for wildlife and screen wildlife from human activity, so if you've got. A development with bright lights and lots of people and things going on, you want to have that buffer to protect that wetland back there from all that activity. About a third of New Hampshire's native wildlife depends on aquatic and wetland habitat, that number comes out to me as being pretty important. Uh, but buffers can also shade streams, if you're, if you like fish, you know that fish need shade to keep the water nice and cool and provide, would eat and breathe for their habitat. And what, and buffers can also help hold banks in place when you do have those floods on water. What's a big enough buffer? That depends on what you're trying to protect. Seventy-five feet is not really enough of a buffer for something like woodchur. Um, but it would protect fish eggs, for instance, from heated parking lot runoff. This is just a, that was a graphic from um. Buffer options for the bay, which is on Great Bay, and it's looking at some different. Buffer sizes and what it would help to protect, and it goes up to three hundred and thirty feet for some terrestrial wildlife. So I'll just go over what the amendments would change. Um, the Wetland Conservation District would include a naturally vegetated upland buffer and setback of seventy-five feet. The district would cover marshes, swamps, bogs, rural pools and wooded bottomlands or forested wetlands. Any surface waters, including river streams and intermittent streams and the land under sed waters. It would leave out fourth order streams. And ponds like Swansea Lake and Wilson Pond, because that's covered under a separate ordinance right now, and someday it'd be nice to see all those, including flood plains, under the same ordinance, it would simplify it. But right now, that's not where our ordinances are. I'd also expand language on what's allowed and not allowed, and they'll be reading that, that language, but I'll go over that a little bit as well. Another thing it would do is reduce the hundred and twenty-five foot septic setback to a seventy-five foot septic setback, which is the state setback. Um, it would allow for wetlands excluding open water to satisfy a minimum lot and setback requirements in certain conditions. And that it would exempt areas which are currently included, so things like manmade ditches, drainage swales, farm ponds and fire ponds are currently included under the Wetlands. Um, district and we would exempt those because they're manmade areas. So what would be allowed? In the Wetlands Conservation District? Wells and manmade ponds, wildlife habitat development and management. Conservation areas and footpaths, footbridges and board blocks. Forest management and tree farming within seventy-five feet, as long as it's consistent with best management practices. Agriculture within seventy-five feet, consistent with best management practices. And maintaining, repairing and replacing existing structures, utilities, roads, things like that that are already there. This is just some for instances, so under the wetlands amendments, we're proposing, you could do things like build a farm pond, build a gazebo, garden shed, a duck line. Plant a pollinator meadow, a rain garden, blueberries, Christmas trees. You could build brush piles, put up birdhouses, you could go in and brush hog to remove trees or invasives from the wetland buffer. And you could also go in and remove trees or practice agriculture as long as you're using best management practices. So these are some things that are not allowed under our proposed. Amendments, a leach field or a septic tank within seventy-five feet. A structure or a building greater than a hundred square feet within seventy-five feet. All of these were, are within seventy-five feet, so that's the Wetland Conservation District, so parking lots, underground storage tanks. Uh, soil removal, excavation and changing the drainage of the wetland in any way. Dumping, fill or junk, storing construction equipment, vehicles or anything hazardous. Or maintaining regularly mowed and sprayed lawn to the edge of the wetland. So here's what's exempt, you mentioned this, manmade ditches and stormwater swell, swales, farm and fire ponds, things that. Things that people created and are maintaining. Existing development, this is key, nobody's going to come tell you how to mow your lawn, I've been hearing that. Um, this, we're talking about um, new developments, so. The new amendments, like any new ordinance, would apply to new developments, it's really aimed mostly commercial developments, but. Also, if you had a new subdivision going in or something like that, we would have said if people did not create lawns, they go straight down to the wetlands. Um, and then also, as I mentioned before, properties on Swansea Lake, Wilson Pond. And then fourth order streams like the Ashwila. Are already covered under the shoreline protection zone. Next slide, okay, so this is just kind of a reiteration, who is affected by the new wetlands amendments, people proposing new projects. Within seventy-five feet of swamps, marshes, bogs, rural pools, wooded wetlands, rivers. And streams, unless the project is exempted, and who is not affected is people with existing projects. Homes or lawns, et cetera, within seventy-five feet of wetlands. Or people on the Ashwila River South Branch, um, Swansea Lake, Wilson Pond. Fourth order rivers. Do neighboring towns have setbacks, yes, it varies quite a bit, but many, many of them do. This is just a list of a lot of the towns around us that do have setbacks of anywhere from usually fifty to a hundred feet. Um, of various kinds. Every ordinance is a little bit different, Richmond, Troy, Virginia, Marlboro, Dublin, Keane, Peterborough, Gaffrey, Westmoreland, Nearestville, Sullivan. Are just some of the towns that I looked at. What if I have to violate the ordinance, obviously, there are times you need to cross a wetland, you need to put your drive, a new driveway in, something like that. Um, with any ordinance, you can apply to the zoning board, in this case, it would be a variance. So people have asked me, how do I know if I have a wetland? Well, if you have a marsh, swamp, bog stream, wooded wetland or no, rural pool. Have a wetland. If you have an area that is saturated by surface or groundwater that normally supports wetland plants. You have a wetland. You could also go look at Swansea's G I S map, and these maps are pretty cool, there's new maps on the town website, this is the. Yeah, back up one now. Um, there's new maps that, and I'll show you in another slide, but um. All you have to do is, if you type in, um, if you Google Swansea, New Hampshire, G I S, you'll go right to the link. You can look up your own property, you can look at the property boundaries, you can look at where the rivers, where the wetlands are, um. Who your neighbors are, all that jazz, there's different layers you can turn on and off, it's, it's pretty fun to play with. So to, if you need to determine an exact boundary. That's where we would, if you have a development you're proposing, we'd bring in a wetland scientist to um. Check out your situation and they are able to tell using hydroxic soils and wetland plants and things like that. Next slide, so this is just showing you what the um. The Swansea G I S. Looks like, and there's all, this is also what went down in here, these are green, green brass marks. Shows you where the wetlands are, and maybe, um, do you know what this line is?
Which one, maybe a little one?
Blue one, right here.
That should be.
I was just curious. This, this line, that's sort of.
Are you going to make it a stream or a river?
Cause this is the stream that's all sweeping. Wonder if that would be a boundary or something. Cause it's not on both sides. I'm still figuring it out, but it's pretty fun to play with, all right, next slide. Um, and then another question that I've had is how do wetlands affect my taxes, and actually, what I said at the last planning board meeting turned out not to be right, I kept getting more and more and more information, it's like I'm digging deeper and deeper and deeper. So this is actually, I went back to um, the assessing company and said. Tell me if this is right, and we looked in the book and he said, yes, this is right. Wetland acreage is currently taxed at a lower rate, from twenty to sixty percent lower. To begin with, and. That's on a case by case basis, so if you don't like how yours is taxed, you can go talk about it. Um, unimproved wetland tracts of any size are also eligible for current use. You want to put your land in current use, normally you need at least ten acres of unimproved land. To go into current use, but with wetlands, you don't have to have ten acres.
But do you have that, is there a maximum?
It doesn't say there's a maximum, it just says any size.
So there's no minimum either?
That doesn't say there's a minimum, yeah. And then um, if we do approve a buffer. I would like to say if and when we do approve some sort of a buffer, um. The state current use criteria allows for a wetland buffer of up to a hundred feet to also be put into current use. So if we said there's a seventy-five foot buffer that you can't develop. You can put that seventy-five foot buffer also into current use on your property and pay twenty-four dollars, I need to run it, yeah.
Jerry, do you know if that's provided, if it's not developed in any way? I would think so, but.
Well, I mean, wetlands shouldn't be developed to begin with.
But there are stuff that will be grandfathered in with this.
So that's kind of, I guess that's up to the assessor, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, that's a good question.
Well, it can't be developed further, but. You might have a seventy-five foot buffer and a hundred square foot shed on you. Does that mean?
All right, I think that's all the slides that I had. And. If the chair would allow, I'd happy to entertain questions or whatever.
That's an overview of the amendments eight through twelve, pretty much an overview of all of them, we'll be going over, we're on amendment eight, but yeah, any question, get out, expressing your mind for Jerry with some. Anybody? So, any questions on the board?
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
John, you had a.
Yeah, like. John Noonan with Field Consulting, I'd like to discuss.
Did you say?
He owns own land, so. Civil engineer, he owns own.
And they're here to address those, that's to what?
So I wanted to just discuss the. Wetlands, and some of the things that were discussed, so we're going to bring some lines up there.
Yeah, you said that right over there, or leaving that to screen if you want.
Yeah. Well, the board is aware. We've worked. With multiple clients here in town on. Mostly commercial industrial sites, some residential and mixed uses in town. And we just want to bring up and maybe clear, you know, on some of these items of. Products that have already been approved, some that have been built, or some that we're currently working on, and just. Brings a light on some of the unintended, maybe unintentional consequences that were coming from the thirty-foot setback. So this here is a plan where we worked on, this is an approved project that is under construction currently on Sapper Drive, Sapper Drive, they're. Carlisle Ford is down on this end now, that. And what's highlighted here in yellow is what would be the buffer. And, you know, pretty substantial impact, I mean. The, the private code is already approved, I know, uh, it was discussed that existing and pre-approved ones would not be impacted, but just to point out the impacts of the seventy-five foot. Impact of the upper here. This project would almost be. Non-buildable at this point, this, this project wouldn't exist, we'd be able to put the two of those units of those contractor days that are in construction on that site. The remainder of this entire site down Sapper Drive almost becomes unbuildable because there is no. As it currently is written in the amendment, there's no crossing or driveway access of, um, parking is excluded, so all this yellow is now taken from areas that were. Currently, right now, for the amendment, would be allowed to be built on. Sapper Drive was, you know, fifteen plus years ago, the town spent a lot of money as a district to expand and, and improve the road, build roads with water and sewer. In the intent of having a corporate park area here. And that was how now that was constructed, Carlisle Ford is part of that, and then now. Only last three years, we're, we're seeing a lot of development coming in, where we're utilizing that, that district and those resources that the town put in for water and sewer. As the amendment goes forward, it would severely limit that district on Sapper Drive, a lot of the areas that are currently could be built on. Would have a different time, a. Um, this is another site in town, um, that we're, they're working on, so Paul Thomas is here, he owns his property. Uh, you know, for thirty years, he's paid taxes on the property and we've, we've done concepts and talked to him about different development ideas and um. You know, just under two years ago, we did a concept here for him to expand and build more on his again. The areas in yellow again then show what, what land would be taken out and couldn't be used, so. Substantially cuts back on what he could actually use that, his property to. substantially cuts back on what he could actually use that his property to work. This down here is where they sell the sheds, it was formerly the land gate garden. A small area like that would now, you know, just with a seventy-five-foot setback. And these aren't every commercial lot in town, they're trying to show us something, without the impact of the seventy-five-foot buffer would impact things in town. Here's another concept that we've done in this entire area here. Yeah, so this is actually the town firehouse that we're working on. We've done some concepts on this, and, you know, as everyone knows, the firehouse has moved on different lots, looking for different locations. Different concepts come up, this seriously impacts the current one of what we're looking at in the lot, so pretty substantial. And, you know, I just want to point out with that. The town's listed, you know, I understand that there's a concern about having a buffer, and that a lot of towns around the area have a buffer, it's likely doesn't happen. And we're not saying, you know, as consultants on my end, we're not saying that a buffer should, you should not, you know, consider a buffer. But consider the impacts and how it's gone into balance between development and protecting the resource. As it's written right now, there's a lot of, I mean, it's in there, that kind of setback and hinder development, you know. There, there was a discussion now that there is a grandfather clause, so it'd be very destructive than that. So we can, but residential properties, so anyone who's a landowner in town, you're going to be impacted by this. You want to, you know, put a shed, put a pool up, put a deck on your house, and there's a lot of properties that are right in your wetlands, you're now going to the zoning board for the rule. So, you know, I would just look at, could it be a special exception? Could it be a conditional use permit? The town adopts a conditional use permit process, then we go through the planning board, U.S. Planning Board, then can work with a consultant or the landowner directly, and the conservation commission brought in this part of that process. So Keane has a process like this, conditional use permit. It allows us as consultants to meet with the planning board, bring a concept and say, this part is a high-value functioning wetland, this portion is not, how about people's development portion to one side of the property or not? Or, you know, these areas that are industrial. Work with the conservation commission and the planning board, come up with a back and forth, and come up with a design that balances between protecting the resource and still getting the value of the landowner for development of their own property. So I have asked that, you know, as the board considers their focus, you know, going forward and having some provisions in the wetland to have some provisions to allow people to, you know, come back and forth and not go through a variance. Because the variance is very black and white, and it's a yes, no, right? So you go to zoning board, you don't meet the prior criteria, and you have just at that time a concept of, would you want to build like your home? Or you want to build as a commercial development? It's yes and no, and it's loaded down, then you're, you can't come back to the same concept, you have to change it dramatically. Whereas if it's a conditional use, you, we can bring it to the board, if the conservation commission has concerns or the board has concerns, we can revise it, we go back and forth, and you're not going to win, win even the landowner and what the county board is like. So, these are basic examples, I just wanted to come here tonight and kind of discuss what the implications are of this amendment for seventy-five-foot wetland.
Yes, appreciate the information. How much of that Tiff district up there, Sapper Drive, would you say is affected? You've shown us in a little lot.
Substantial amount, I would say at least, probably sixty percent of that.
I would say.
Is there another picture of the other side of the board?
This is the other side here, so. But what I just showed, this side of Sapper Drive is where I hope some parterrens is right here. Yeah, substantial amount on this side too, so I would say you're probably sixty percent of your land along Sapper Drive and that Tiff district is probably taking out of the belt, developing the land.
I have a question about, I've heard at one point that that, that whole area is still brown with the section of the lake that will burn, that's their separate drive that. Was it, was it, I think it was just an area that's estimated to be sand ground.
Initially, it was pasture and pasture, they just farmed, dairied more. And when they closed down, I believe the soul released the land, I think to Wickham, and they went up there and tried to excavate, put out a lot of air, and they went down, I would say probably eight or ten feet, and all of a sudden, their whole area filled in with water. So remember, it's not only the, one section where you're showing now, where Flatley is, on the north side of that road, they did three other tips to do there, and they all had the same problem. So, yes, there is a wet area, but what you're showing there now, Flatley is already developed, and that project has been approved, so there's not going to be a change into that area.
Yes, so this is not, this is not the Flatley, so this is where it turns right here, the bare ground is right here. This was the gridiron project that was approved here, not constructed yet, so this was approved by the planning board last year. But this is really to show all the land that ends up becoming out of that Tiff district. So Flatley, with the project that you're discussing, so where this comes down, comes past Carlisle, it's this building right here, Nano Tech is on, it'll be down here, and Flatley would be up in this area. That Flatley project would be another one that, you know, it's approved and it's built, but that one with a seventy-five-foot would, wouldn't even be able to be constructed.
I guess where I'm going with this question is, it was my impression that this was heavily disturbed land before we undertook the Tiff development, and I'm wondering whether it, Sherry, if, if those, if the wetlands that exist today, you know, aren't being laid, basically, because it's been sort of disturbed, I just don't know, it's a question.
May or may not be remedied, and may, you know, don't know, I guess they'd have to be driven by soil scientists.
So, you know, and it's sort of like, that's that, because that area is telling you. You mentioned it was developed.
It could if there was further in the ordinance, but the ordinance is going to say what it says, and that's it, that's what's going to go by. And, yeah, there's a lot of money that town has invested up there, the road, the water, the sewer up there, and that's a bit of a loss for the town. Any other questions?
So you mentioned that Keane has a process for conditional use that involves the conservation committee. Can you expand on that a little bit more, and maybe just kind of set the question up here? You know, currently, we see projects before they come in front of this area. I'm on the conservation committee too, so I'm sorry, I'm here for the planning of the. Conservation committee sees projects, and they make recommendations to the planning board, and those recommendations are considered sometimes more, sometimes less, right? In case of wetlands, to me, it gets more serious, right? So with that in mind, can you elaborate a little bit more on the Keane process? Are they actually looking for approval from the conservation committee?
Just keep it brief, because we're in a zoning discussion tonight, so I have to.
Yeah, so, so what we would do is, in Keane, you end up submitting your site plan application, just like you do in Swansea. The planner then looks at it and says, okay, you're going to be impacting your driveway crosses a wetland buffer. So they have two buffers, the rural and ag areas are seventy-five feet from the wetland resource. The downtown districts are thirty, you know, regardless of the props, the buffer on either one are impacted. The planning board, before they see it, you turn in the application, they send it to the conservation commission. We, as the applicant and consultant, meet with the conservation commission in a meeting, and we also do a site walk. They then recommend it to the planning board to move forward, and then, of course, state permits come after that. We would then go to the planning board, and the planning board votes on the conditional use permit. They might deny the conditional use permit, or say, can you not impact this piece and move your driveway over here, whatever that might be. And then there's a back and forth. So like I was saying, with a variance, it's a yes or no, and if, if it's denied, you have to completely change your plan. You can't come back to the same plan, then you would directly.
Question, I have a question and a comment. The question is, you showed the fire station, the bowl of areas, and I, I looked at that plot, and you're drawing on it. And I thought the southern edge of the building was about seventy-two feet from the wetland. How far do you say it is?
From the edge of.
From the edge of the wetland area, not, not where you've.
Oh, from, from the edge of, yes.
Of the wetland area, because you're putting some drainage in there, which, which is a man-made structure, which is not.
Plus, plus all the parking, there's some, there's.
There's no parking down there.
Yeah, there's parking down.
No, there isn't, not down there, not down the bottom. There's some parking in there, but.
But the most parking right here is within the buffer.
Yeah, that, that's within the seventy-five feet.
Yes.
Okay, so.
The building is not.
I know, it was very hard for me to measure from the parking area to where the wetland actually is on that diagram, and.
Go ahead, yeah.
So can you show me where the wetland begins?
I don't have a pool of sight scans tonight, but this.
That's the only other topic, we're getting off topic.
This is like down on the edge of the page, so this, this yellow here, this is the extent of the seventy-five feet, that's what we're showing. This yellow all right here is the seventy-five.
Yeah, okay, I, I have to, I have to agree with you in that sense. I just, I'm just surprised because I thought I had done some calculations myself. And so I'm just, but my comment is that as a member of the conservation commission, I, I really want to protect the wetlands in this town. And I've been looking for a way to find a compromise between wanting to protect the wetlands and also allowing reasonable development in town. And one of the examples has always been that Flatley project where we, where we've allowed some crossings of the wetland area with driveways, et cetera, et cetera. And it seemed to fit, and it seemed to be engineered in such a way that the wetland was preserved. So I'm intrigued by this process that you're describing of a, of a conditional use permit, but I, I want to make sure that the people who are interested in the conservation of the, of the wetlands and preservation of the, of all the things that they do, that Sherry outlined before, are indeed considered, and so I'm, I'm not certain yet where that goes. And lastly, I'll say, I'm on the zoning board, and I, I agree with you, but variance is very hard to get, and it's, if it happens, it is, there's no room for wiggle, and if you buy your project there and it's denied, then you can't come back with the same product. So I, I hear you there. I, I think this is a very difficult decision for, for the town and for the planning board, and I respect your gentlemanly lady's consideration.
Just identify yourself, please.
Vicki Scolera.
Thank you.
I guess I'm wondering, because I'm naive about this. So Sherry's talking about a seventy-five-foot buffer, but you, as the whatever example you're always, how far from the wetlands would you personally recommend to them? Like, you wouldn't go to the edge of wetland, like I wetlands with my land, and I know I wouldn't build. I don't know if it's seventy-five feet, but I know it's not ten feet. So what is your recommendation?
So I'm not here to recommend a buffer.
Well, what, you're saying seventy-five is too far, so what is not too far, in your opinion?
Well, what I'm trying to point out is the extent of a seventy-five-foot buffer, and the written amendment right now for the zoning.
All right, but the.
Doesn't allow you to put anything in that buffer.
Okay.
Correct, so if you want to put a swimming pool behind your house, you have to go to the zoning board. If they deny it, you can never put a pool behind your house, because it might be seventy-five feet within the wetland. Those are the type of implications I'm just, I'm trying to bring forward, and, and some of the concerns even with the commercial development in town. I'm not just saying it shouldn't be thirty feet, it should be, and be, you know, that's not my stance to say what the buffer should be, or if there should or should not be a buffer. I'm just trying to point out, as it's written right now, what the implications of the written amendment are.
I guess, but I'm just saying that maybe the implication isn't seventy-five feet, or the whole space that you showed.
Let's just see if the seventy-five-foot paddies are not, and then.
I, I probably just didn't understand, that's all.
Any more questions, the engineer?
I don't have a question, I'll be answering, but I would like to make a comment to the board. My name's Sarah Carbonow, I'm a Winchester resident, I am the partner of Mike Faulkner, who is a Swansea businessman, he is also the owner of four properties in town.
Four.
I am, I was also the Swansea planner for twenty years, and part of that, I have fifteen years' experience working with lot firms, doing applications before the planning boards, zoning boards, drafting ordinances for communities. When I looked at this proposed regulation, and I know there's a lot of work that's gone into it, but when you're proposing an ordinance, it needs to be a balancing test between the public good and the private rights. And hopefully, those are fifty-fifty. Sometimes the public good weighs out a little bit more, it's sixty percent, sixty, forty. In this case, it is basically a taking, or could, could be considered a taking of one's private property. If you had a dot on the table, and you did a seventy-five-foot radius around that, that takes up point five-five acres, that dot with that buffer. So that's more than half an acre. I, I'm sorry, it's point four-one acres to calculate the area there. So just that one dot takes up almost half an acre of buffer. If you have a table, you're sitting at a three, three-by-eight table, and that's a wetland, you do a seventy-five-foot buffer around that, that is a point five-five acre impact. You have a one-acre minimum lot size, you have now taken more than half that lot because you have a three-by-eight wetland on your property. That is pretty onerous. It might be justified, but in this particular case, there's no relief, there's no special exception provisions, there's no conditional use permit. You have a rural pool, a rural, rural pool on your property, but you don't even know it's there in the fall, but shows up in the spring. And it's within the, you know, you have to do a seventy-five-foot buffer around that. You can't put your garage there, you can't put your swimming pool there. If you don't have any other place, you need to come for a variance. So in my estimation, I think, I think the intention is good. I think as Chad ran and John have said tonight, there are many unintended consequences of this ordinance as written. I think it needs a lot more work.
Thank you for your comments, and anybody else?
I've got a question, and just to follow on what Sarah's saying, because we know that, and I have to talk to a professional, so sorry. We know that there are buffers in surrounding communities. Do all of those surrounding communities that use wetlands buffers also have some version of a conditional use permit?
Not necessarily conditional use permit, so it might still be under the zoning board, but have a special exception.
Okay, so.
A special exception will have provisions saying, these are permitted uses, and these are prohibited uses. You know, such a, like gas station within seventy-five feet is not allowed, or underground fuel storage, or that might be prohibited. And permitted uses might be an ADU on, on a house that you don't have a ride with it, accessory belonging above it, or that might be a permitted use for a driveway crossing, for any lot is a permitted use across a buffer.
Okay, so that, that removes us from Sarah's point of concern, which is she's feeling that it's taking because no use is permitted within the seventy-five-foot, as, as.
Currently, as the amendment.
But in the other towns where we do have seventy-five-foot, that there are specific uses that are permitted.
Just about every town has, has some type of provision in there to allow certain things, and whether that falls under the zoning board, and is a special exception, or falls under the planning board as a conditional use, where you have the conservation commission and the planning board reviewing the. So it could go here.
Anybody else?
Barbara's going, so my question is, is there any way that at this meeting, we could correct that problem of special exception for the conditional use and still move the article forward?
If there were just one thing that we could correct, perhaps, but there's a lot of things that's going to need correction, and that's going to need more discussion, in my opinion, anyways, with the board, what were you going to say?
I have some background on that. That was going to be in the amendment, special exception didn't really make sense for the amendments, but a conditional use did.
Yeah.
However, Swansea does not currently have a process for conditional use permits, yet.
So we can't do that tonight?
We can't do that tonight, when we adopt a conditional use permit provision in our ordinance, then we can't, and that can be done at the same time, but we don't currently have a. Not to say we won't ever have a problem, right now.
So I guess my other comment is just that we need to think about what the focus and the purpose is of this ordinance. And um, you know, we're trying to, you know, how much we value the wetlands and the values that they hold. So this balance that Sarah speaks about between public use and private use, I think that's what we have to be thinking about is the public interest in this case. Um, some of these lands, we knew many years ago when that industrial zone was created, that it was wet and people had been having problems trying to develop it because it was so wet. So that's like nothing new. Right, right, right. But what I'm saying is, is that if we have marginal land, you know, so do we push it? Or do we try to protect the resource? And maybe rethink about where we're building in order to protect the resource that ultimately protects the water quality and the interests of the town. So.
Okay. You're Richard.
Just through, I don't know, one opinion, I guess. We have learned over time that it's not smart to put oil on top of a standing pond to this, um, seedless. This is something we did in the fifties. We found that it, through time, that it's really damaged the system around, this is just around those implying. But what my point is, uh, over time, and we have learned that what we thought we were doing correctly isn't right. And what I would like to see is us become a little more proactive since we've learned how to protect the wetland and what is needed to be, as I say, proactive, you take care of the wetland. And if we made a mistake, we can go back and shrink the buffer. But it's a heck of a hard job to undo something that we've both put down in the thirty feet or the twenty feet or whatever. You know, somebody would suggest. Where the state has uh, expressed concerns about being in the ones closer than seventy-five feet.
That's something.
Well, no, but they want, I've written another area that they uh, we took, maybe the university of Haverhill. But they have suggested strongly that we have a buffer of, you know, of at least seventy-five feet to protect the wetlands in that place.
Well, the state requires nothing. I mean, near our site, the state requires no buffer on that.
Again, these are, these are conservation deals. Granted, the state is a little bit behind uh, in a lot of areas. But I would just really strongly suggest that we go with the seventy-five foot setback. And if we need to, you know, through, maybe more education, we can shrink it safely. We can do that next year. But I hate my fact to see us, you know, push it and then find out that we're, you know, that we're correct, not correct. Doing this.
Well, of all the wetlands in town that have been here for hundreds of thousands of years, I guess it is, can you point to any of them that have been affected or are being affected by not having a seventy-five foot buffer?
Yeah, and does that, we have, we have somebody obviously answered that.
Wetlands right in your backyard, um, adjacent to your property. I mean, there was a pond where that was um thriving with peepers, uh, wetlands. And slowly it's been encroached upon and slowly it's getting filled in and slowly this being destroyed, you know.
There are still peepers there.
Well, there are, but that pond is really reduced in its value. It's getting.
You talk about the fire pond, right?
Well.
That fire pond that goes, the, what, what is Portland?
Well, it's more than a fire pond because it's upstream that comes through, almost the building comes all the way down and goes. Yeah, but um, yeah, I'm just saying that the impact and, and all of the development is, is really impacted the quality. So I, you know, there's a number, probably a number of places similar to that, that would have benefited if we had given it a little bit more protection.
Setback you're talking about there, not necessarily a proper zone with nothing in it, but. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's always that.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Adam said, is that we did start at the beginning of this process, trying to have language of, of special exceptions. Because I agree with what you're saying and what Sarah said, that we want to have, there be some relief from this. We want there to be some sort of balance. So whether or not you vote for this tonight, we're going to be back. We're going to keep at it. Because, you know, we don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good, but we also want to get, get this right. So, you know, we're here to try to, to try to start this process. It isn't just the start and not the end. We're just going to keep at it. Um, but, you know, I think the information that, that Sarah's night I'm the vote would be absorbed and used. Um, because, you know, when we learn more, we try to do better. Right?
And you're.
Well, just one more thought, because I'd like to thank Barbara for all, I know that she and Deb Crowe have worked for twenty-five years. But I probably, it sounds as if you're staying without any of our offers. And um, it's frustrating to um have such good work in front of us that, I think we're all in agreement that we want to protect our water. I don't think there's any doubt about that. Um, but I'm wondering, conservation commission, um, are you comfortable? Um, I, I don't, I want to respect all the work that you've done because I think it's really good work, but for Sharon.
We're in here.
Okay. Uh, would you be comfortable with us as a planning board saying, you know, denying quite a lot of clearly these amendments? And, and we continue to be for another year to work. I just, I wanted.
I agree with you guys. There's some weakness to it and that was unavoidable. We decided to make a run at it, see how it went. Um, you know, so like I said, whether you wrote it up or down tonight, we're not giving up. We learned this information. It's important information. We need to do what we can to protect the wetlands. We're not going away. Um, you know, this, this information is not lost. And of all the work we've done is not lost. You'll take what we've done and move forward with it.
I've got one more question and ask you, Adam. We don't have time at this point to make any kind of significant changes.
Don't believe so. We just talked today earlier today. Um, no time this year.
Because in my, in my dreamland, I would like us to find some sort of a compromise that would address some of these issues so that we could at least.
That was several weeks ago.
Yeah.
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 And that, that wasn't on the table apparently.
So if we don't have that option, then.
Well, we have, yeah, yeah. We didn't, I mean, there's no limit to how long we can discuss this next year, or starting this year. Um, so we are, we are too late to deal with the part for this year. Um, it's denied tonight and the conservation commission will keep working. There's no reason why you can discuss it after we provide. There is certain timeframes uh for stuff that goes in the Warren article, but just talks, tracking operating, so you're sure.
I, I would, if, if I'm reading the rule directly, this may not pass. Um, and if it doesn't pass, I, I would really urge the planning board to commit to looking very seriously at conditional use provisions and also at uh possible special exceptions is another way of going. But, but to continue working with the conservation commission on trying to find a solution, a compromise, so that we can do what we all want to do, and that is protect the resources of Swansea and allow reasonable and, and responsible development. That's, that's what we want to do. So I'm, I'm just sending out this statement. I hope when you make the vote, that you will also consider that as a, as a resolution that you might all make together.
Hold this voter, I ain't working on a conditional use.
I understand you are, but I want, I want the planning board to go on record to be.
Yeah, exactly. We have been working with the conservation commission on this. This isn't the first time we've seen the conservation commission on this or these regulations. So it's been working with.
Well, it continues, Scott.
Yeah.
So the shutdown tonight, like all of the, you don't have any room this year. So all of these projects that are being done can go right ahead and take over the, whatever they want on the wetlands, right?
Well, the projects you're referring to are the ones that have already been approved, I think.
Okay.
So they'd be going on regardless.
Oh, okay.
So other projects will come before the board, planning board before the thing happens, and public hearings will be held and you're, you're welcome to attend.
Okay.
And voice your opinion.
You, also, I'm sorry, sorry. I'm just so, just so everybody is aware, um, any project that's approved prior to uh our Warren article being voted on, those follow the code as it was in twenty twenty-four. Anything um approved after the Warren article gets voted on, uses that version of the code. So I don't like to use the term grandfather necessarily, uh, but if your project's approved before these get voted on, um, then they use twenty twenty-four code. Anything after is twenty twenty-five.
And he's referring to as voted on tonight, not at public. I mean, I mean, not at the town, maybe tonight. If it's, if the board votes to approve these tonight, then anything coming into force after that is going to go with the new rule. Regardless of whether it's passed or denied. Then at the time, if it isn't passed, it'll be all those. So, you agree with Sarah.
Sarah Carbonow again. Um, people have been referring to projects and large projects, and I think they talk about commercial development and how this is going to impact that. It's going to impact Joe homeowner. It's not just for commercial development. It's for anyone who wants to construct anything or use anything on their property that has a wetlands on it. Or it, it might not even be the wetlands on your property. Your neighbor might have a wetland that is right up to the property line. That would impact your property. Um, so it's got, the way it's written right now has serious impacts, not just for commercial development, but for the homeowner who might have a one acre lot, um, wants to just build his garage, and the only place he can do it is in that seventy-five foot buffer. Um, that's my point. It lies across the board if it's passed.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll shift back to amendment number eight. Uh, yes.
I've got a, a kind of sketched up a thing. Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Faulkner. Uh, I am a septic designer, uh, septic installer, contractor, excavating contractor. And I sketched up something that kind of goes with her. This is a one acre lot. Okay, um. Yeah. I mean, I can't hear. Oh. This is a one acre lot with Swansea's current, you know, minimum frontage of a hundred and fifty feet. Okay, uh, two ninety, the math comes out, fifty-one acre lot. If you take that seventy-five foot radius, you've got one little bit of wetland right here in the middle of a lot. This is what's impacted. Yeah, so that, no access to the back. That's your bird watching. Um, if that wetland happens to be quite up close to the road and you pull a hundred and, uh, hundred and fifty foot radius, well, seventy-five foot radius, hundred and fifty feet of actual impact, you can't access length, period. Um, if, if you're taking the property, you're changing the use. How do you tax somebody on this? If it's been a building lot for, you know, however long, now you're, the town is saying, no, sorry, can't do anything on it. That's a problem. Okay, I know. In my mind, that's a property.
It was early design, right? We're getting back to amendment number eight.
Thank you.
And then we heard of the testimony on it and then during, it was no surprise that my position had been taken on that. It came from the United CPN. The other thing is, it's not fair. I mentioned it when we first discussed it, that the conservation commission is not a fair ordinance where one property owner has to give up a seventy-five foot, you know, buffer. They can't do anything on it. The next door neighbor, if it doesn't have it, doesn't have to give it up. It's not really, it's not across the board. It doesn't mean that, you know, that not that it's fair, nor it's so. Yes.
I agree with Scott, that it's a taking of property. And you're using in domain by paying in front of the vote.
Taking property, right. I mean, you still have to pay tax. If they take the property, nobody pays tax.
Right, but it's still a taking of property. If you're telling them everything, you can't use it. And to my mind, given a lot, right, it's not just compensation, which you have to have when you take property like that. And also twelve A of the constitution in your hand should say, when you do that, you're going to have to take it for public use. Public use is defined as a school, a roadway, or a government building, or the fire department, or a police department. This is a permit. That law was changed in two thousand and six that amendment was put on because of the London, Connecticut debacle. So I think there's some very serious legal problems that the town may incur as you talk, and we can't use the buffer.
All right, thank you. So I think we're ready for a vote on this one. You're going to raise those into the minute record?
We do have correspondence from your selection.
Okay, I will let Adam read the correspondence from your selection and third and sixth please.
I'd say it's two minutes and one.
Oh, yeah.
I, I received comments from people who put it here tonight. Um, it is my job to read these comments, as you all know. Um, we're going to start with a letter from uh Kimberly Miller. Um, she says, um, Dear Adam, I hope you're doing fine. You well. Uh, thank you for taking the time to speak to me on the phone. I included in this email and my comments regarding the proposal of the conservation program. I am ready to express my strong support for the continued and active conservation of our wetlands within our town. As a concerned resident, I believe that protecting our local wetlands is crucial to preserving both the environmental health of our community and the quality of life for all of its residents. Wetlands provide invaluable benefits, including water filtration, flood control, and the sensing habitat for wildlife. They also contribute to the overall resilience of our town in the face of climate change, the immediate impacts of rising waters, severe weather events, not to mention groundwater contamination risks, such as empty beauty incidents. Furthermore, wetlands play a key role in maintaining biodiversity and supporting the growth of economies from ecotourism and recreation. I urge you to advocate new measures to better our wetland protection policies and conservation measures by safeguarding vital ecosystems. We ensure the long-term sustainability of our town's natural resources. Thank you for your time. Confident that town leadership, we can, can, to foster healthy, sustainable community for future generations. Considerably, Miss Miller. Uh, that was Kimberly Miller. Oh, you all. Oh, she does. Sorry, yeah. Uh, apologies for another email. I understand that you value property rights. It is an important part of uh freedom. But if you don't protect wetlands, it could harm the broader community and eventually it could even affect the value of living on your own property and other aspects of our life. Remember, wetlands aren't the beautiful ecosystems. They act as a natural flood barrier, filtering water, preventing human pollution. These services help protect uh property and save money in the long run. And if the concern is the ability to sell your land to developers, it might bring in quick cash. But if wetlands are destroyed and the area becomes more prone to flooding or erosion, that could significantly reduce property values in the future, not just the new look for anybody nearby. The risk of increased costs for flood control or insurance could also make the land less desirable in the long run. Many investors are now looking for properties with natural features like wetlands, as they already know how valuable they are for flood protection, water filtration, and wildlife habitats. Wetlands can increase the value of land in the long run, especially as sustainability becomes more important in the market. This could attract the type of businesses we want to see in Swansea, not just another storage facility. Uh, I know you care about all your properties and want to make sure the best is there for it. Wetland protection isn't about taking away your rights. It's about ensuring that the whole community thrives. Uh, and that includes protecting all of our properties in the long run. That was Kimberly Miller. The next letter we have here is from Mr. Connor Maroney. Uh, dear Mr. Parkett, I am a citizen of Swansea, New Hampshire, and I'm ready to express my support for proposal amendments eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve for the weapons conservation district. Please email as I am able to attend there tonight. It's come to my attention that there are what the community believes are regulations brought forward by, it's called our infringement of property rights and want them to be voted down. While some take that into consideration, another idea worth noting is how voting down the amendments and allowing people to develop with no regards to the weapons will affect other citizens in Swansea, people who live here full-time. Among the practical uses for weapons and their ability to offer protection from flooding due to its. Among the practical uses for weapons and their ability to offer protection from flooding due to its ability to absorb water, where I grew up in my neighborhood, we saw development in the wooded area behind the house, which resulted in rainwater being diverted downhill into our backyard, which would seep into the housing, causing constant damage to our basement. Some years before being able to put a system in place that would divert the water from our home. This is a new convenience I would not wish to see happen to anyone who owns property in town, and having those wetlands as a safeguard against it, especially given the amount of rain and damage that came into town in twenty twenty three. Perhaps the most important factor in having these regulations in place also concerns the weapon's ability to serve as major cities for the people who use groundwater in the area as well as to help filter out pollutants and add minerals to water, and provide clean water for use around the house, developing two plus the weapons on top of what, and there's a risk of pollution going into the, have to dwell water, which could harm the members or household, something with with people in the New England area should be familiar. The right for people to make the choice to have this water and have it be cleaned should not be infringed, especially for constructing buildings and businesses that are owned by people who do not live in Swansea. It is for these reasons that I should report eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, the weapons conservation district, these regulations will help ensure that every citizen in Swansea and those who pass through will be able to enjoy the benefits of the weapons that were, that of the weapons that were so hard for us without being contaminated or just taken away, thank you for your time, Kimberly, I'm going to go. One more, promise, last one. This is from the board of selectmen. And, let's see here. For the twenty twenty five zoning ordinance amendments, uh, dear Mr. Cameron, and members of the planning board. The Swansea Board of Selectmen is taking the unusual step of authorizing to express the board's collective opinion regarding the proposed twenty twenty five zoning ordinance amendments known as amendment eight, twelve, specific to the amendment of the current weapons conservation district. I am addressing the planning board in the interest of the town as an agent of the selectmen and as part of their beneficiary responsibilities of the residents of Swansea. For the reasons outlined below, the selectmen are asking that these amendments not move forward to the warrant in twenty twenty five. The idea that these amendments should be put before the voters uh for them to decide is noble, however, these are complex changes that will likely be approved without an understanding of all of the impact that they are recommended by the planning board. The selection are not asking you to reconsider your support for the concept of protecting weapons in our course, because they believe that the concept and the amendments are well intentioned. The selectmen are asking the planning board to not put these amendments before the voters in twenty twenty five, and instead to work collaboratively with the conservation commission, planning department, and economic development, and by the, and by the community, and experts like the engineers and wetland scientists at Fieldstone Lake Consultants. This will allow time to consider the information learned over the last month, adding relief through additional use permits and the unanticipated consequences and uh unanticipated consequences. Come back to twenty twenty six with amendments to be presented, to be presented to the public that have had adequate exposure to achieve protection of weapons while minimizing the inclusion on property rights by allowing for the use. That is something that current selectmen would likely report. I do believe that there has been sufficient consideration of the unintended consequences resulting uh from the enforcement of these articles. Uh, there has not been information presented which includes the financial obligation incurred by the town to enforce these amendments. Uh, there has not been data provided that would indicate that indicate the anticipated reduction in property value due to the inability of landowners to use their land while maintaining a seventy five foot undisturbed set back on weapons on their property or adjacent properties. For example, at the January eighth, twenty twenty five orders by the Fieldstone Lake Consultants noted that the properties along Sapper Drive will no longer be developable. We looked at Sapper Drive already, I'm not gonna read through that, it's just reiterating what John, what John said. Uh, Sapper, the town created Sapper Drive Industrial Park with a tip overlay district almost thirty years ago. The intent was to encourage development of the property for commercial industrial uses. The bond undertaken by the town will be paid off in twenty twenty seven, and the tip will be resolved. The tax revenue, which has been used to pay off the bond, will then go to the town's general funds. However, the development contemplated when the district was created will not be able to occur. This is a financial taking from the residents of Swansea, as the exception was to encourage commercial development and receive the tax revenue that the development created. The landowner will no longer have marketable property, which will be a measurable financial taking from the landowner. In addition, the land will then stay in current use, which will yield significantly lower taxes, which will constitute a taking from the challenge perspective. A Swansea taxpayers in essence invested in this property. The proposed new regulations would deprive residents of their anticipated return. Another property which will be presented by Fieldstone, uh, shows a conceptual plan for light use commercial development on Route twelve between the AeroQuest and Marcy Hill, I don't know if you showed that one, John.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's my.
Uh, this is a question is approvable under the current regulations, however, the land will essentially be nondevelopable after the proposed amendments. In addition, uh, the portion which borders Route twelve of Marcy Hill Road was recently purchased from the town. Uh, the purchased parcel has access on Marcy Hill Road, but the proposed amendments would eliminate that access and create an area which could not be disturbed. In essence, the owner purchased a body of wetland, which he would not have purchased if he believed he would not be able to use it. The loss of light use commercial buildings will result in loss of property tax revenue from the town, and whether the property tax knew of no value to the landowner. Again, a financial taking from the landowner and the town. Because wetlands are not clearly defined in the amendments, many property owners would use the ability to mow their lawns, create an ADU, build a garage, garden, uh, create a playing area for their children, et cetera. The proposed amendments will create a necessary burden for the residential property owners, and in essence, halt significant commercial development in town. The selectmen do not believe that this is a beneficial, uh, is beneficial plan, nor this is the best interest for taxpayers. In summary, uh, in the summary packet from the conservation commission, which was presented to the board of selectmen, one page lists the several towns and setbacks that those towns require from wetlands. On the surface, the information may be correct, but the enforcement of the setbacks is not black and white. Many towns offer permitted uses within the wetland buffers by special exception and or conditional use permit, with both, a landowner can apply to relief, in the case of a special exception, they would apply to zoning board, they need a conditional use permit, they would apply to planning board. If the pre, uh, if the preset conditions are met, the landowner will be granted a relief from the zoning board or planning board. In both cases, the planning board will have contemplated allowable uses and provided a path to relief for the landowner. Proposed amendments eight, twelve, not providing leave, these amendments very specifically state that the seventy five foot buffer will be natural undisturbed buffer. Under these proposed regulations, the only relief available to a landowner is applying to the zoning board for variance, which is and should be an extremely high burden to achieve. If the ordinance states an undisturbed seventy five foot buffer is required, how does the landowner persuade the zoning board that any intrusion on that will be within the sphere of the ordinance? Normally, the hardship criteria is a high hurdle, and normally a variance request that fails, fails because the applicant will not drive, uh, cannot prove a fight yet. In this situation, it would be easier to prove a hardship than it would be to prove that the proposed use means the sphere of the ordinance. Why are fourth order bodies of water, like little ponds, swanbelay, ashlit, uh, in South Branch, uh, that are identified as primarily, primary wellings, uh, exempt? Why should the landowner who owns property on one of these bodies of water be exempt? Be allowed to mow right to the water's edge, for someone who owns a property with weapons be required to observe seventy five foot undisturbed setback? Shouldn't we be doing all that we can to provide for the protection of the bodies of water? The selectmen's concern is primarily based on the unanticipated consequences that will result from these amendments and the litigation that will follow. The financial taking of property of this magnitude will lead to lawsuits against the zoning board, planning board, and the town. The selectmen are extremely impressed by the indication and effort, first of all, by the conservation commission, bringing this issue forward, and they would like to see this effort continue through the collaboration with other parties so that we can have wetland protection regulation that can be supported and are fair. Clearly, Michael Burnley, on the other side.
Technical question? So, if we are to develop additional use permits, what is the, is that, is there a review of any of it?
I need to use more research on it.
We just not even like regulations.
It'd have to be, no, it probably has to be in our zoning, we can, we can issue rules in our slight planning regulation about it, but the criteria for it should be in the zoning. So if it has to be in our ordinance, then it needs to go on next year in the warrant.
That puts us two years out in revising our lessons.
Um, not necessarily, we could do both at the same time, but it would be dependent on one passing, and I don't wanna get into that yet, because we're getting way ahead of it.
I'm just trying to get a sense of time, because I feel this is an emergency, we're twenty five years.
So if if it does need to go on next year more, they can both go on the warrant at the same time. Um, it would just be a thing that one passes or one doesn't, then we need to have a plan, you know?
We used to, so we all of our units to leave council. And we can apply anything.
Well, legally, legally, it's fine.
Not that, yeah.
This is different.
I will say, uh, these amendments, uh, the litigation that will, that will follow. Well, we're just admitting this, and nothing will.
Yeah, sue for anything, you know, if someone is taking your property, you're probably gonna sue. All right, you're gonna say that I bought that property and had wetlands on it, and I could use that up to the wetlands, and now you're saying that I can't, yeah, they're gonna.
There's plenty of legal theories that should be brought forth upon this. Doesn't mean you'll win, but it means the county will have to spend money to defend it.
And you tie up for one.
Uh, there's one, there's also a good, uh, definition, you know, the, what wetlands are, and that's what I think, that, that certainly opens up. Something might not be.
That's, that's the next amendment.
Could you say your answer?
Next amendment.
It would still get it. So, yeah, right, and things are correct, and you would be working with the body on the conditional use permitting process?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, a little bit of, like, yeah, and out of the scope of the meaning, a bit, yeah, I, I was, first off. Okay, amendment number eight, that is the amendment that puts a, uh, basically, the seventy five foot buffer around any wetland in town. So, we need a vote, we need to either support it or not support it, it doesn't matter either way, and we'll have a roll of all of them.
I'll make a motion that we do not support this amendment.
Motion by Michael York, that's a planning board not support this amendment number eight, is our second. Also, second by Brandon, any further discussion? Okay, Michael, how do you go? In favor of not supporting?
Right.
Brandon?
Not supporting it.
Okay, I'm not supporting it. Mark?
Um, I'll just say that I think this is a good amendment, but I think it could be better, and with the And with the, uh, values, you know, up to the condition of use, our effects and community uses will be. Um, so it's just fine, like, you know, support this amendment.
Pressure for support. Support. Hey, Coria?
Hi. I'm really important. Um. I feel a raise to urgency to move on this, however, I, I think, having, uh, a way to have. So, in that reason, um, until we can let, uh, conditional use process, which I believe will work in this area expedite.
Please. Going, 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 but I don't know.
Um, I'm, I would like us to have some enough.
Okay. Early.
Not good as well.
No, okay, so, and it does not pass. That moves us along to amendment number nine. Amendment number nine is adding a section, section seven, article B two, to read as follows. Wetlands include but are not limited to any freshwater wetland, which includes marshes, swamps, ponds, internal pools, and wooded bottom lands, and any surface waters, including rivers, streams, and intermittent streams, and the land under surface waters, except in short borders, streams, and designated rivers, lakes, and ponds covered by section seven, um, shoreline protection district, that should be section eight. Determinations of the boundaries between wetlands and uplands shall be made in accordance with methods outlined in the nineteen eighty-seven U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual Y dash eight, seven, dash one, and the rearable supplement for the Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual, North Central and Northeast Region Version Two, or as many. Well, that's a long one, and that kind of duplicates, if, if we, which we did, turn down number eight. I think this is great. Amendment number eight would have replaced. See. Uh, number nine.
For me? Sorry, number nine is adding.
Yeah, it is adding, but I'm just saying that it pertains to what's above that, in the, in the first part of it there. And it says the this is the definition, the Swansea wetland, this is what we have now, so it's going back in here. Swansea Wetlands Conservation District is defined as those areas of the town that are inundated or saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support, and that under normal conditions does support a prevalence of vegetation adapted for life in saturated soil conditions. The Wetlands Conservation District is sometimes referred to here in, and if wetlands are wet areas. That defines a wetland. I don't think we need number two in there. That will say, that's more of a word to say definition of a wetland anyways, that's exactly what that is, that's in our document now. So I'm just bringing that up. That's correct, amendment number nine.
What would we expect in, uh, things, rivers, lakes, and ponds to go to that?
Okay. Yeah, well, actually not. Yeah, I see your point, yeah, right.
I was already opposed to that, this was a question.
Now, say you want to make a motion for that article, or is there any discussion? I mean, get some discussion here for this.
Explanation as to why it was not important to have that.
But I, I think in the spheres, um, that's written here is, is because we totally have forgotten the shoreline protection, which is in the Hampshire level.
So to make this consistent with state definitions, exactly.
Well, if you're only related to rivers and you buy, you have to buy, I just think it's a land protection.
And that's not as restrictive as what's proposed here. They, they have a setback for building setbacks in the shoreline protection, we have a one-twenty-five feet state requires, I think, fifty feet, something like that. We have one-twenty-five in town Swansea here, but again, that's a setback for a primary structure. It's not anything to do with the driveway going through there, or, or using land, or mowing it, or any of that. So. There's that.
The speculation is, uh, late, um, rivers are used differently than that. So. So later, back doors. We always think to do. Make that happen, so we can.
The buffer is out now.
Definitions, I'm just wondering what this definition does for us that we didn't have to.
The definition before did not include necessarily all the things, I think, where it mentioned before, um. Is it, so it was like an A, B, and C before, and so we put it all together and take one paragraph, and we added a couple of things to it, so this is the more comprehensive definition of the.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm good, all right, good, thank you.
Any questions from the public about the what I think nine here, yeah.
I'd like to hear from the people who wouldn't like to approve number nine. What's wrong with making the definition a little bit more precise? And, and again, the shoreline protection, uh, uh, act covers all those bodies on the class four, and using the ponds in ways that help preserve those bodies, and, um, so I, I, I'm not sure why excluding it is a problem, uh, in that sense. And, and being more precise with the definition can only be good, as far as I'm concerned.
And as far as I'm concerned, it's duplicating what the definition of a wetland is in our ordinance there. Again, it's taken from the, the, the state definition of a wetland, that's how we got that in there. And it seems to surge, unless you've left out some of the wetlands that aren't included in them.
So you're, you're saying basically that you wouldn't like to see the ordinance have repetitive language in it, is what, was what the real issue is?
Uh, that's not the real issue, but yeah, that's, that's a good point there, yeah, repetitive is not always good. Generally, when the planning board gets a project in front of us, and there's a discrimination between, you know, is that a wetland or not a wetland? There's always a sign that's drawn on board to take a look at it, so. If there's a wetland there, they're going to find it, and it's going to be mapped out there. And that's what we do. Anybody else? Your motion to support or not support it?
Sure, I'd like to motion and we support this, uh, moment nine.
Motion by Mark to support, uh, amendment number nine.
Sorry.
And it's read and seconded by Richard, is there any further discussion on that? Then we roll over, start again with you, Michael.
Uh, I'll support it.
Support it. Brandon?
I'll support it.
For me, I don't support it, Mark? I support it. Richard, so. Or, enjoy it?
Support it, and I think it's good to have it on the board, because it will help people where they're standing what weather inside, it will switch in the future. The board's relation, that evolution.
Early, so. So happy, that one will be on the, uh, number one. Number ten, amendment ten, that's amend section seven, article D, oh, this is second, um, just go back to that number nine, there's just a, a typographical in there, or it mentions section seven, that should be section eight. Shorelands Protection District.
Oh, right.
And that can be changed without any further discussion, since it's grammatically, or, or, there it goes, so it should be eight, section eight.
So.
Pardon? Yes, it should, where it mentions, it mentions, uh, it refers to lakes and ponds covered by section, and it says section seven, it should be section eight, and all of those.
Thank you.
Ready? Amendment number ten, amend section seven, article D, read as follows, usage permitted. Uh, usage permitted in the Wetlands Conservation District provided that all required permits have been obtained are as follows. We are crossing out water impoundments to the extent that wildlife considerations will allow in the construction of wells for water supply, and we're adding in construction of wells for water supply or man-made ponds as committed by New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. We're removing number two, which is drainageways, streams, creeks, or other paths of normal. We're, let's see, skipping over the next one, because we're not needing that at all. Uh, we are crossing out parks and such recreation uses as are consistent with the purpose and intent of section C. And we're adding in conservation areas and footpaths, footbridges, and boardwalks, providing for pedestrian recreational uses such as fishing, hunting, hiking, bird watching, and nature study, provided said structures are constructed so as to permit the unobstructed flow of water and the natural contour of the wetlands as is preserved. Uh, we're crossing out, or getting rid of, or deleting, or who want to say, conservation areas and natural trails at the use. Let's see, open spaces permitted, that hasn't changed, so that will stay in there. Uh, number six, we are crossing out forestry and tree farming in wetlands. And, uh, we'll be adding forest management and tree farming within seventy-five feet of wetlands consistent with the best management practices published by the National Department of Resources and Economic Development, and the UNH Cooperative Extension. Number eight, we're getting rid of agriculture in wetlands, and we're adding agriculture within seventy-five feet of wetlands, where it does not impair the function and values of the adjacent wetlands consistent with the best management practices published by the National Department of Agriculture, Agriculture, and Food. Number nine, we are getting rid of, I use the construction or reconstruction of fences, footbridge, catwalks, wharves, and structures, and hence the site, uh, that enhance the site, as well, and that provided. And we're getting rid of, right, as said, structures are being protected so as to permit the unobstructed flow of water, and getting rid of the natural contours of the wetland reserve. Um, and we're getting rid of, uh, alternate, alteration of surface configuration of the land by filling or dredging, provided that, and we're getting rid of the alteration enhances, uh, the wetland wildlife aspect of the site and the natural contour of the wetlands preserve. Uh, number eleven, we're getting rid of construction of streets, roads, and other accessways, and pipelines, power lines, and other transmission lines, and replacing it with maintaining, repairing, or repairing existing, and multi-located structures, public utilities, streets, roads, and accessways, provided that the works conform to the general standards about, adopted in this section. That's a long one. So, a lot of uses that, uh, getting rid of, a lot of uses changing around the words that there. So there are some changes which seem kind of minimal, but they aren't, because number six, for instance, getting rid of forestry and tree farming in wetlands, and you're restricting it to within the seventy-five feet of wetlands.
Is that a restriction, Scott?
It would be a restriction, it would, is there under permitted uses?
So it's permitted within seventy-five feet, so that also prevents it with a hundred fifty feet.
It has been permitted in wet.
Well, the restriction is there, but not the seventy-five foot isn't a restriction.
Now, if it isn't permitted in the wetlands, it's only permitted outside of the wetlands.
Right.
So that's a restriction, right?
Yeah, I, I just didn't think the seventy-five foot was a, was a restriction.
Um, it isn't, but it says it here, so, I mean, that's what we're reading here.
Well, it says permitted, it's permitted here, it's not a restriction.
Okay, because it's allowed in the wetland now.
I know, so that's a restriction, saying it's not allowed as a weapon, but the, the saying that's within seventy-five feet is not a restriction. It's allowed within seventy-five feet, that's a permission.
Yeah. And number eight, agriculture in wetlands, same thing, we can't do agriculture in wetlands anymore. Uh, you, you can do it within seventy-five feet of the wetlands. So. Yeah, well, it depends on how this goes, I don't know, because we're, let's see, crossing out conservation areas and natural trails, we've crossed that one out, let's see what else is crossed out. Um, we're not allowing drainageways, streams, creeks, or other paths of normal, not, water runoff, or runoff water rather. Now, let's see why we need to get rid of that one. But we are getting rid of it in here.
May I say something?
Yes, you may.
Um, I think even without amendment eight, I think amendment ten, this amendment here, if it was even permitted, um, is it stepping in the right direction? I don't see why we should permit agriculture in forestry in a wetland. Um, why would we need to do that? And also, I think there are very few other uses here that are really changed, they're just better defined. We couldn't even understand what the heck number two meant, that's why we crossed it out. I think this brings a lot more clarity. I think the previous language was unclear, and we talked around, well, what does this even mean? Um, so I think this, as written, actually provides some reasonable protection for wetlands.
Okay. So let's see. Let's say we're crossing out water impoundments to the extent that wildlife considerations will allow and construction of wells for water supply, replacing that with construction of wells for water supply or man-made ponds as permitted. Well, isn't a man-made pond a water impoundment?
Well, yes, water impoundment sounds to be damming up the brook.
Talking about a dam, yes. Right, you have to follow yourself though. Yep, so, the construction, every construction of fence, footbridges, catwalks. And then alteration of the surface configuration of the land by filling or dredging, provided that, you know, enhances wetland wildlife aspect of the site, natural contour of the wetlands preserve. Nice. That's under number we have, okay, construction of streets, roads, and other accessways, pipelines, power lines, and other transmission lines, we're getting rid of that. And just maybe maintaining, repairing, or replacing existing, existing and off-located structures, public utilities, streets, roads, and accessways, provided that the order of general standards adopted in the section. Which are what the generals were talking about here. Anybody know what those general standards are?
Or requirements, maybe?
Number eleven, maintaining, repairing, that's the one we read, right? Okay, number eleven is maintaining, repairing, replacing, existing.
We have a standard where this twenty, three.
Okay, the next one, the next one.
I'm not sure if they know.
So no streets or roads be allowed anymore.
In wet, in wet.
In the wet, yeah. And in order to transmission lines, or any of that type of stuff.
I think this as, as the compromise, um, as someone who would like to see a buffer around wetlands, I think this is adopting this or recommending this amendment allows us to enhance our wetlands protections. In a reported way, so I would favor this.
I, I, I would say that you're moving some things like actually happening on many, that you remember, um, and that's was pretty important. But, so are things in here that might require going to the home, um, so, so did. I, I don't think there's, there's a lot of things like that.
Well, and, and a lot of the site plans that we see here, and you know, some of those detention fines that are anyways are directed towards a wetland. And if we're not allowing any disturbance or anything like that, that kind of leaves that stuff out. Just as a point, what were you going to say, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, John England, Gilstone, my consultants, just reading through that the way it's written, so it's striking out construction of streets, roads, and other accessways. By approving that, you would end up saying that you can't have a driveway crossing a wet portion of your, so if your property was wet along the road fromage, and you have dry properties back, you now can't get a driveway into there, even if the state allows it, but if you pass it, you would be going for bearings.
Pretty much.
Or anything crossing the wetland.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, yeah, thank you. Also, the number ten, I'm removing out, operation of the surface configuration of land by filling or dredging, again, if you were to put a driveway like the, you know, just pull us here, uh, that, details, still under judging or whatever. You know, to do that directly, so you're saying that can't be done either. That's our restrictions, the alteration enhances the wetland wildlife aspect of the site, we can't destroy that. Natural contour of the wetland is preserved, in other words, contour line of drainage, everything isn't disturbed. I, I think that amendment needs a lot more work, number ten. We ready to discuss it, vote on it, or do you have anyone to comment? Nobody for discussion? No, I'll make a motion that if we don't approve it, it's going to need more. Seconded by Brandon, any further discussion?
I think the comment is.
Yeah.
We're saying now that these will work, we've been at this two months.
Exactly.
Why couldn't we?
Because.
Why couldn't you bring up your objections?
We did, you guys shut us down. I brought, no, I brought up objections, maybe not that particular one right there, but I brought up many objections to this, and there wasn't too much of a compromise to act interested in, so here we are, we all, the board voted by consensus to bring this, as it's written, to this public hearing, so that's what we're doing with it right now, voting it up or down. The motion in a second. And the motion is not to recommend amendment ten, um.
Yes, on the motion.
Yes, on the motion. Brandon? Yes, deny it, yes, Scott, yes, deny it, Mark? From, from forward, for it. For it is for it, for it, for it, for it, okay, that one passes, that will go on to the a more, that's, that was amendment eleven, amendment ten, sorry. Now, we're bringing to amendment number eleven, amend section seven, article E, read as follows. And we're crossing out special provisions, and we're replacing that with requirements. And it reads, no beach field, septic tank, pump chamber, or dry well may be located closer than one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet to any designated wetland. We're crossing that part out, and we're replacing it with seventy-five feet of wetlands, in other words, you can put it from seventy-five feet. Expansion of any existing, uh, and existing system to accommodate additional loading shall be considered new construction. In instances of septic failure certified by the town's Swansea health officer, the, and again, crossing out one-twenty-five, replacing with seventy-five, but requirement is waived if a licensed septic designer certifies to the health, health officer by one-hundred-and-twenty-five foot, blocking that out, replacing with seventy-five feet. Setbacks is not possible in the event that the system can be replaced with state specifications. Uh, number two, the WCD, which won't be in there anymore, but anyway, WCD excluding bound, uh, bodies of water uh, may be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements. Provided that seventy-five percent of the minimum required lot size is contiguous, non-wetland, and that they continue as non-wetland area is sufficient in size and configuration to adequately accommodate all required utilities such as wellhead and sewer disposal for onsite septic tanks and beach fields. Number three, no new structure or building, excuse me, greater than, uh, under square feet. Any area shall be located within seventy-five feet of wetlands. No parking areas may be located within seventy-five feet of wetlands. No underground fuel tanks, uh, fuel storage tanks, or tanks containing other hazardous materials shall replace in the WCD. Uh, no soil removal or change to the surface topography of soil or modification of existing drainage characteristics, including disturbance of water levels, water table, or water runoff patterns shall be allowed in the WCD. Number seven. No dumping, discarding, or replacement of fill of any kind that will be allowed in the WCD. Um, number eight, no storage of the junkyard materials or equipment such as construction equipment, vehicles, or anything containing hazardous substances within the WCD, WCD, unless house and then allowed structures such as a covered garden shed. Number nine, all wetland buffers area within seventy-five feet of wetlands where we require to remain in a naturally vegetated state or be planted to native vegetation without regular mowing, spraying of pesticides or herbicides, or other activity that will damage the buffer's ability to filter and flow of water entering or leaving the wetland area. Comments on number eleven? That's for no. Who wants to speak in favor of that? Anybody?
I have a question for Sarah. Um, you were our town planner when we established the hundred-and-forty-five foot setback.
Yeah, I, I, I was, but not when it was established, it was there before I
Okay.
came into town.
Because we keep trying to figure out what the origin of that number is.
I don't know.
It was picked out of thin air. I don't know. Anybody just saw it? Oh, so Barbara, Barbara. I don't see it, but I hear it, go ahead.
Are you asking the origin of the hundred-and-twenty-five foot setback? There have been studies that have shown nutrients do move through soils at nine, to ninety feet or more, and we were expecting to be protective. Um, we have a variety of soils in Swansea, mostly a lot of sandy soil, so the precipitation rate is quite high, um, or fast, I don't know what the proper term is, anyway. Um, so we were, we did not pull that out of thin air. We pulled it based on the studies that were in existence at that time, which I have provided to the planning board in the past. So, in my opinion, we are giving up a lot to say seventy-five feet. Um, you know, that's what the state uses for septic systems, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's correct. And I would say that we should, at the most, go to a hundred. Because again, studies have shown that nutrients do pass through the soils beyond seventy-five feet.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Well, thank you. Just a second. Yes, ma'am.
Just a recommend, oh, because it's clear, just a recommendation, unless I missed it, if you pass this, you can define WCD in the beginning somewhere.
Thank you, yeah, we'll get to that.
Well, Scott, Bill, I hope you remember the word selection.
If, except for items you run into, a good portion of the balance is a rehash of, of the first article eight. You're, you're again putting in a, a seventy-five foot setback, which doesn't currently exist. So it would constitute a taking, um, it would mean that, that someone couldn't build that ABU, that, that they might otherwise be able to build, but our, our recommendation would be the same as what we, what we, um, your question regarding this eight through twelve, which is that they don't prefer their study. And you've already indicated that there are many people that have indicated willing to participate. If we all agree, this is a, this is a good concept, we'd just like to see it fully fleshed out.
Yeah, thank you. I don't see why we can't use the seventy-five, so that's for you. So. We still have to vote on this, though. Any other comments you can have public on that number eleven? Yes?
Um. I guess one of my concerns is, uh, with the limited things that are allowed in that conservation district. That. That it says no dumping of, of material. If you wanted a garden, no one can bring you a load alone, it's not legal. You know, they're, they're just, if you think of all of the, the things that aren't specified in this, you're constricting people's use of their land. You know, when more than I feel it should be done, uh, that's, that's my opinion. But you're taking people's land, you're taking their ability to use it. Contracted, I mean, and there's no compensation there. Uh, I just disagree with this, this whole section.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Now, let's see, still need to vote on whether we're recommending this article, amendment number eleven, or not recommending. Want to make a motion for that? Recommend it?
Make a motion that we did not have.
Working by Brandon, that we do not recommend number eleven to go on the ballot. Is there a second? Second by Richard Lane. Any further discussion? Okay, roll, roll, roll. Just a second.
I would just say it's a shame all these things are here because there's four, five, and I think are very important. But unfortunately, in the other ones, do go contrary to, uh, amendment.
Okay, Michael York? Not recommend it, Brandon? I do not recommend it. No, no, Richard, Victoria, no, darling, no. Okay, that, number eleven will not be on the ballot. Okay, now we're on amendment number twelve. And that is, that's section seven, article F, to read as follows. Areas exempted from this section. Areas exempted from this section will include wetlands associated with currently functioning and maintained manmade facilities and strong water drainage wells, sedimentation and/or detention basins or ponds, agricultural and irrigation ponds or swales, fire pond systems and related facilities. And then it goes on to say to be exempted, such features may not have been constructed as part of a compensatory uh, mitigation or created in what were purposed in previously jurisdictional weapons. Okay, so then these are areas that are exempted from this section, meaning the wetlands. Um, any discussion on that? I think that's one I could maybe even vote for. I will make a vote, a motion for an article twelve beyond the warrant, so second, and we'll all, second, and by, by Mark. Any further discussion? Okay. I know you're, yes, Brandon?
Yes.
Yes, Scott, yes, Mark, okay, okay. Yes, Victoria, yes, darling, yes. Okay, that one will go on to the warrant. And that concludes the public hearing of, uh, warrant articles for the wetland district. Now we're closing here. Bringing up item number two. Brad, either be. Okay, petitions zoning that's wrong, or don't base the road.
Those of the persons that were. Everybody else is gonna be ready for that.
Another public hearing, it goes. And this public hearing is a petition zoning amendment, that's rezoning of Basil Road. And I think I mentioned before, this is put under petition, so yes, we're gonna have a public hearing, but anyways, and they're discussing, getting public input on it. So regardless of what the board votes on tonight, it's going on the ballot because of the petition, so. We're gonna open up that zoning, uh, open up that hearing, and that, again, that's on the rezoning of Basil Road.
The chair, but when you actually voting on it?
Well. We vote, yeah, we vote one way or another, the planning board already voted by consensus not to support it, and that was on our November fourteenth meeting. But, but we also said that they could bring in a, uh, a petition to this, to this settlement with twenty-five signatures or more, which is what they did, but we zone that down there, and as anyone can do. But the planning board didn't support it, the, you know, the planning board didn't support this one at our November fourteenth meeting because it was too much like spot zoning, and when you start that, it opens up a whole door of spot zoning through the entire town, it was just two small little, um, I don't know, small little parcel being split up. So anyways, the public hearing is open, you know, we, this basically what's going on here. So, this is a proposal to rezonate Basil Road to residents' district. The zoning, and I'm reading, this is just what's on the petition right here, so I'm reading that for now, it might not be worth a word with some article, but this is what it does. The zoning map of the town of Swansea dated nine one forty-seven. As amended, it should be further amended as follows. Lots something on Basil Road shall all be included in the residence district with the following exceptions. Lots between New Run Brook and Route Ten, which are currently in commercial industrial district, shall remain in the district. In that district, tax map two one two, lots twenty-two and twenty-three, and map two oh three, lots four thirty and twenty-nine. Tax map two oh three, lots fourteen, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-six shall remain in the business district. Tax map two oh three, lots eight, thirteen, and twenty dash one shall be included in the rural agricultural district. A portion of tax map two oh three, lot twenty-five, within eastern boundary equal to the abutting lots on either side, shall be included in the residence district. And it went on to, and got all the signatures they needed, and we're having a public hearing, and any discussion on this, any questions on this, uh, they can be answered tonight. So, does anyone have any questions on that? I know the board doesn't. Yes?
My understanding is that, um, is that this is an attempt to correct what might have been uh, an error in zoning a long time back, and it, you know, it looks to me as though there's, there's a business area approaching on a residential area, and it may have been an error in the original zoning. And this is an attempt to correct that, because a lot of, a lot of the things, if you read, it sounds like it's an awful lot of of this and that, and this and that, but a lot of those things are staying in the zoning that they already are in, and then some are moving. And it just seems to me that this is a, an attempt to fix something that was, was busted before. And I, and I'd like to have other people's perspectives on that, because I'm not a longtime resident of Swansea. But that's what I think is going on here.
Okay. What do you think's going on here, Sheriff? You're the one presenting, correct?
Sarah, do you want to go first, or you're gonna talk?
Barbara?
Um, I, I was just gonna say, I agree, if you look at the uses on that road, I mean, basically, it looks like a residential area with a few businesses in there, so it, it's kind of hard to say, oh, well, it's, it's zone business, so it should be business when you've got, when the, the main use is residential. And so I don't know what would happen, you know, you're talking about spot zoning, and this is a question, Scott. Um, what happens if you zoned it all residential, and then those become, um, what do you call the uses, non-conforming?
Right.
Unconventional uses that are grandfathered. Or non-conformant, yeah, that are, that are grandfathered, and then that use stays with the property until it changes. Somebody stops using it as that, right?
Yeah, but that, that was the concern that the planning board members, some of the planning board had on that, is that if you did that, the businesses that are there will be non-conforming.
Right.
And any expansion, any change, anything at all they wanted to do there, they have to go to the zoning board for adjustment for a hearing, it's not a question of the election, which is very difficult to do, and it's not fair, again, in my opinion, for those property owners that bought that property as a business, using it as a business, someone would have that taken away from them and able to expand it or change it any other way.
So how do you correct this imbalance that's occurred on the road? I mean, well, if it's not the way that was petitioned, how, what is another way to correct that?
Well, the imbalance you're talking about is a mixed use of residential and commercial, right?
With the majority of these being residential.
So what is this gonna solve? I mean, what is, if this zoning goes through, what's it gonna solve?
It's going to maintain the residents for the rest of the, the rest of the road, so those people will know that they're going to be living next door to another residential property, and that there's not going to be an expansion of the commercial use. Which is, you know, it's been.
And that may or may not happen by itself, we know this happened like that now, some of those properties will never be developed commercially, because there's not room on there for commercial, they remain resident, but even though they're in a business district.
But there's no assurance of that.
No assurance unless you own the property, that's what private property is about.
So, so Scott.
I think in terms of zoning, in, in terms of zoning, there's no assurance. In terms of zoning, it can be a unique verdict.
Or any, whatever is allowed on that piece of property, if you bought a piece of property that was zoned commercial or commercial industrial, like something that is down there.
Yes.
And you fully intend to, you may even fully intend to develop it, put that in mind. If that's taken away from you, then you don't have it.
So the only way to to keep it as it currently is being used, you know, as opposed to how it's currently being zoned, is to reason zoning.
So, my, my question is, are the property, property owners like Sheriff, are they non-conforming uses right now in the business district?
You mean a residential?
Yeah, they, they, they are not in a residential district, they're in a business district.
That's right, yeah.
So, if they stop living, stop treating their residents as a personal residence, then they cannot develop, uh, they cannot put a, expand, uh, or subdivide it, or, or whatever, and put another residence on there because it's a business district. Is, isn't that the same sort of restriction you're talking about for the business owners? In the, it, you know, the, aren't they also having their property restricted? And I'm just saying that it works both ways.
It is, in a roundabout, convoluted sort of way.
So that's, that's what I'm saying, that's why this needs to be fixed.
But I do believe, but those are, you're gonna, that residence is allowed in the business zone or in the commercial industrial zone, I'm afraid.
There are no residences allowed in business. Only empty families.
So it's, it's not that it's allowed or not, um, but if a one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, or manufactured housing dwelling established prior to the adoption of the subpar graph on a lot in the business district, so any residences that are in this district uh, shall be considered to be permitted use in the business district, and shall not be subject to section eleven or whatever.
And, and does that mean that if they're no longer used as a residence, they have to be a business?
No, does not mean that. It means they're allowed as a allowable use, permitted use.
If they're permitted use, if.
That, that property then is, is permitted to be residential in perpetuity?
Um, those are the property, yeah, generally. Yeah, uh, one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, or.
Okay, so that, that takes a little bit of my concern away. I just still think this is a, we're trying to fix the, the zoning in that area.
I think the main complaint is the traffic on that road, isn't that correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
My complaint is the traffic on that road.
Yeah, and it's a classified road, and it was always made for basically the farmers that were there way back that went and borrowed all the property. It's only designed, that road was designed just to have him get to his fields to actually pay them at the time, and move his, his cattle back and forth. So classified road has no breakdown lane, not a highway, and I think we need to have some kind of consideration for the mile that is keen, and that they're all low-density residential homes. They have voiced their opinion with us, the residents on Swansea. Over fifty or sixty percent of them don't want to have any more commercial business on that road due to the fact of the traffic already kind of overextended in burdening the road.
Yeah.
And it's an important area, it's a very unique, uniquely different road than anything in Swansea. I am not seeing anything that's happening mostly in keen and partly in Swansea that connects from highway to highway. So everybody that wants to, it's a great cut through. They're not conducive to the speed limit. We have just, I watched somebody today with an eighteen-wheeler that was not obviously delivering product on the road, because there's no through-road signs on both ends. He was just traveling right through, and also a food, uh, shop that went through, that's an eighteen-wheeler or a semi truck.
I know, I'm, I'm sure I've seen it personally, yeah.
So I think the, the road can't handle more on a level of a commercial or business sizes that exceed more than one business or big commercial development, it's not gonna be able to handle it. And I've checked with the southwestern regional planning convention, and in their opinion, courtesy that I've known, to the businesses that are there, that they are grandfathered in to use their property and transport their equipment and vehicles and trucks as they have been doing for decades on the road. They are not gonna be restricted, so I think that was their major concern, and we want to be considerate of that for them, because they are part of the road. And they've been there, and we've, no offense to them, but we've been putting up with this traffic and travel for years. We just don't want to see any more of it coming here. It doesn't deserve the use that is already taken, but we don't want to have more of it happening. Especially that there's a New Run Brook and a huge, huge wetland that has a flood plain, and that does have a seaweed buffer that's right up against it. And that needs to be preserved. And our, our thoughts on the.
The zoning is gonna do that, there's someone behind you that's had our hand up a long time.
It's, it's just like, I bought my house as a residential house, and then two years ago, the house right side of me, which is only about fifty feet from me, was being sold by a realtor, and they were gonna put a bagel shop there. Now, a bagel shop with only fifty feet between us, you know, that could run all night, so your residential is shot.
I'm Matt Robinson, I own BDM Sweeper, Alan, David. So, I understand the concerns of all the neighbors and everything on the street, and, you know, we use the street. We go out to Swansea End, I mean, obviously, that building's been there, you know, since, I believe, the late sixties when W L Paul Barassa ran out of there. There was also a concrete plant that was across the street in that building, it used to be Hill Construction. I think once you get up farther on the street, you know, past our place, if I do think, that becomes a rural residential road. But mainly, at least everywhere that I've seen, when you have businesses, there needs to be a path for those businesses to get to the main road through that district, and I guess what my point would be, and then I have a question, is somehow, it's only fair to people that are buying in that other section, and if you count the businesses up that road, I believe there's seven or eight, and I'm, I'm doing a little bit of guessing, but, you know, looking at that road. Uh, at least they know that they're gonna have that traffic. Uh, and then I guess my question is, so the way I understood it is, for instance, say. Our company moves out of there, and someone else wants to move in there, what's the ramifications of using that building? Because now they're running.
It'd, it'd have to be the same use, then it could be used, but if someone else wanted to put a different use in there, then not gonna happen.
And that's, and that's, I think, a real problem, because then you have basically devalued property.
Or if you wanted to change or expand your building, and that wasn't residential, you'd have to visit the TVA.
That's, that's, that's where my concerns are.
I don't, well, mine is, it might.
I think when you go up the road farther, you know, the other issue that I, I really see, and I live on Keen. On the very opposite other end of the road at the same address, ninety-three Bates Hill Road. Because there's two of the same addresses.
I think it's very frustrating for us.
Just kind of bringing that up, in case somebody that does fire and ambulance wants to.
Yeah.
Think about how that should be changed around.
Yeah. Yeah, then you gotta know that.
And, but when you get, when you get up the other end, we have the traffic on the other end. You know, the no-through-truck signs, I mean, I believe if you look into the, the, the legal, legalese of the federal government. Yeah, a town or a city, and do not, please do not quote me on that, but a town and cities take any federal funding. That they really can't repose their road, and that's why it's really non-enforceable, everyone puts the signs up. For every city and stuff that you go, you go into. It doesn't get enforced.
I know, if the zoning goes through, it's probably not gonna help your traffic problem at all.
No.
Well, it's gonna.
We don't want it to increase, right.
Like Sherri said, you know, the traffic we have now is fine, but if you look at that road now, where that bridge is. They have paved, paved on both sides of it, because the culvert under that bridge is completely flattened. And with more traffic going over it, it's not gonna last forever.
Yeah, nothing does.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm just curious, I, I thought the amendment, right, because I haven't read it in detail. I thought the amendment exempted certain properties and left them as business.
Yeah.
So that means that if they're, if they're not changed, if the zoning isn't changed. Then that means if they sell a business and some other business comes in, it's a, it's a, it's, they'd have to go to the planning board to get that business approved. But they would be approved use, because they're still Business District.
Right.
So I don't, I don't understand where there's a taking there, Scott, I, I don't understand.
The taking is the ones that aren't, like, I think your business you're saying is gonna be in the residential or not?
No, no, no.
Those three lots that are business in the half-mile down Swansea Bates Hill Road is staying business. They are grandfathered in to do what they're doing.
Grandfather is different than.
It's different, no, it stays, staying in the zone, so there's no grandfather.
Business zone, and they're, they can do what they've been doing for the last thirty years there.
And anybody comes.
On their own, with what their equipment is up.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're staying that way. The rest of them, half the people below that didn't even know they were in the commercial industrial zone. And they don't want to be in that zone anymore. They're all single-family homes, they're, half of them on the east side are less than even a half an acre big. And they're sitting right on top of New Run Brook and the wetlands in their backyard.
So there's no danger that they're gonna be developed industrially, is that what you're saying?
A mine, so they.
Why don't change it?
Yeah, why think, there's no danger that they're.
Because they, people want it to be residential, they don't want commercial industrial.
Residential anyway.
I see, um, this is all-purpose storage, they've changed the three-acre business to no change. But they've not seven-acre business, they changed it to rural agriculture, then rural agriculture one, they're changing the wetlands.
And that's the one that.
So.
Right, and that's the one.
There are, there are businesses who have bought property in this district. And will be changing it, and I, I don't see them represented to tonight, uh, which they were noticed, um, but. Not all of them are, are staying same, there are some that are changing, at least being proposed to be changed to rural agricultural. Uh, so I, I do want that just noted for the record, that there are businesses being changed over.
Twenty-three was being changed from business to residence, so.
And that, that is a new subject, I think, uh, I'll just.
It's just like, um, the neighbor right side of me, he's right tight to the brook, but his was going to be a bagel shop.
Well, unless it came to the planning board, it wasn't gonna be a bagel shop, had to come here first, I was too close, then it wouldn't work. I, I, I think the main thing I wanted to highlight there is that, uh, lot twenty and twenty dash one, they, they did just recently spend a good deal of money. Subdivided that was here, and so. They don't, they, they invested in that land, and now it's not going to be able to be used for purposes that they may want to use it for. So that, that, that would be an issue, I think.
Well, if they're not local, and they're, Swansea residents don't want something on that level built in that lot. Why not be of choice for this road to change that?
Well, if you want to control a piece of property like that, you just have to buy it.
Well, that's what we're working on.
You should.
No, I was just gonna make that point.
Yeah.
That they're trying to purchase that property next to all three, and make the change to the zone.
Still they do, like, still they're taking the property rights, and then when they intended to develop it. Zone as it is now, it's changing, but again, um.
See, what the other problem was, when that project was proposed, they didn't seem to have a problem taking our property rights. From five or six of butters against that property.
What rights did they take from you?
Building a commercial-sized structure, and will depreciate the value of these homes in that area. And it was proven.
Right, but that's not a real property, they didn't take any of your property rights away, but you're.
They, and, yeah, they did.
You're talking about taking their property, the rights to develop that property.
But I'm taking consideration that they were stealing our property values of the properties that we've been living in there. They're taking that from us.
That's, yeah.
It depreciates the value of our homes.
You're free to do it how you wanna do it.
And that's exactly what was gonna happen.
If you didn't want to live in that district, why'd you buy a house next to those businesses, it's just that curiosity.
It wasn't.
It wasn't there.
And it wasn't offered.
Businesses across the street and next to you that are there.
It wasn't offered to me.
I bought my property at fifty forty-two Bates Hill, I'm Deb's friend.
You identify yourself.
The only business that was there, May twenty-sixth, nineteen seventy-five, was Hillary's.
Can you say that, that's a phrase, man?
Yeah.
Prayer.
So.
Yeah.
Fifty years in May.
Okay, anything else?
I just wanted to, this, this is somebody that served on his own network for a while. I just want to echo your sound, I'm just reading through this list, it is spot zoning. And from a planning board perspective, I would think you would take into consideration. That if there is a business that's being used, and there's a danger of use, still a business, you, you look at it from a upfront standpoint. It's, it seems to be in, in your rights, so now, where, where that was a business. That was either in a commercial zone or a business zone, now it's bracketed by residences. So now it's gotta meet whatever you thought were returning, so.
Right, yeah, you're right.
And it's gonna be a nightmare for, for the planner to, to know which zone this particular property is in. With regard to all-purpose storage, they are going to build on that property, whether you rezoned it or not, they're already in the queue. They, they, the zoning board's gone through the, the, the court process, and, and I, I've been in discussions with them, they are gonna build. Regardless of what the challenge to, to roll, my point would be, I hope the planning board will not recommend. The proposed petition, or.
Thank you. Anybody else? Make a motion, we've already not recommended it, but we can add an additional motion at the hearing here.
Is it gonna be on the ballot?
Motion by Brandon, not recommended, just go from the ballot, or not recommended by the planning board, it's gonna go on the ballot. It's not recommended by the planning board, your side, any men? Okay, I'll do a vote, I'll vote.
Yes, I'm not recommending.
Not recommending it?
Not.
I'm not recommending it, Mark?
I recommend this.
Recommend it, Richard? No. Victoria? Yes, Charlie? Yes, so what does that give us now, I lost count? Forty-three, okay, so the planning board has not recommended it, not afforded. So. Well, in a public hearing, probably should have done that before we voted, but I'm proposing a public hearing, and that's a dumb matter, again, it's going on the ballot.
Comes on the ballot.
Even though the planning board, if they recommend it's going.
Make the changes to it.
Almost over, we have a voluntary merger, that is the word, and Michelle, Max, request a voluntary merger between tax map two two five.
Right.
You know, these guys are the band line. Excuse me, everybody, if you're gonna continue talking, please, uh, just move more over there, we have one more item in the desk. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
For you, we would do that. So we're on that merger, and there's no public hearing for it or anything like that, we're. They've given us in the packet, uh, weren't these contracts? Yeah, sorry, it's, it's the voluntary merger between tax map two two five, lot fifty-four, and then tax map two two five, lot fifty-five. Uh, this does not require a public hearing, it's just a formality to present to the planning board, they have all the paperwork they need presented to the departments. Uh, you have that. We all have maps of it, I'm gonna take a look at it, I don't have one. And they're taking out this kind of property, right?
Yeah.
And merging those three, everybody see what's going on? We're going and setting up a property.
There are two thousand five. One of you rent, saw the vehicle, looking up today.
Next day, so the garage, sorry, and the house on the other one right there.
He lives in the garage, he lives, he lives in another house, and he rents the other.
Okay, so we're here, and I have an ADU there.
He did tell me at one point, uh, he did tell me that once his renters leave sentence, he might tear down that house. I don't know if that's still in the works or not.
I think they are, that's what I talked to him about. Has nothing to do really with the merger, they have. Again, everyone sees what's going on here, you see, you got the map down there? It's pretty straightforward. Creates no new locks, doesn't merge too long together, and if they ever want to separate them, they have to come to the planning board. They can do it. So they can't do it anyway, they couldn't, they can't put it back, so once they're merged together, that's it, they're wanting to. So. Anybody? A motion, a motion to roll through the, uh, the, online, if it's not online. Voluntary merger, seconded by Brandon, is there any for the discussion? All those in favor, did they go say aye?
Oh, I think I did.
A little vote, okay, so that is your decision. Okay, so, so there's, uh, nothing more, I do have just one thing, pass this around. And this is a state proposal for, um, fixing the intersection, actually intersection, yeah, intersection on, that was a Swansea factory road. And where Route one oh one is there, we all go out there with the rivers, you can't even see to the left there, moving up over there. And so, that's what this is right here, and the state, state is proposing to, to move it. As you can see, I'll pass it around anyways, and to move it somewhere, um, in the east, and then put a, and put a roundabout in that. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna be like.
Circle state, yes.
So, and it's. It's not a gun deal, but we're not commenting on, you know, twenty, I'm mentioning about whatever. Is there any, uh, anything else, would we go to the order, anybody else, has any other comments on here?
Yeah, the one oh one project.
Yeah.
Is, they're gonna discuss it, I'm gonna select, you know, the one.
I mean, so, okay, it really does have a, it can do with ones.
It does, they're rerouting Swansea factory road.
They're routing it, but it's a boat that came running.
It is, however, during disruption, it's going to reroute traffic, on top of that, people sound about, you know, reroute traffic a little more.
Yes, regional impact, regional reduction, I think that's part of the.
Are, are these buildings proposed to be removed?
They might be, I'll have to find out that here. But also, this alternative is technically not set, this is there about, or in one area, as, as like. In opposition to like building a bridge or, um.
Because it's, it's a river, right?
And you can't see when you come out.
Yeah, you can't see over the bridge in Long City.
That would be that, yeah, meeting in February on that, anybody wants to participate, or people looking on it, there, you might pass it across. Updates, yeah, you have an update from the committee or anything like that?
Oh, I, we're basically done, we're gonna, we're gonna start having our, um, open. Houses, the eleventh, the eighteenth, and the twenty-fifth, and eleven, two, and the twenty seventh station.
This is for the fire station or something?
Fire station, yeah. And Jay has posted the cost per house and all that, you have to look at that, I can't, I don't, the two hundred thousand, it's like, huh, thirty dollars. It's fifteen dollars per hundred thousand, so, yeah, uh, it was the projected cost from what I ran on what the bond would cost. So that means if you have a two hundred thousand dollar house, plus thirty bucks extra for taxes for you.
Thank you, Jay, Jay, you're the chairman of that committee there, and you did an incredible amount of work on that thing.
Your help, his help.
You say dollars, seven. This is a lot of work.
Dollars, it's, it's, it's fifteen cents per thousand.
Gotcha.
So a hundred thousand, it's fifteen dollars.
Anything else for the good of the.
Of the six pack.